Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Our land acknowledgement.
We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisagi territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisagi and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of Indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial.
Is there any disclosure of county interests? Seeing none. The agenda.
That the July 23rd, 2025 Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved.
Move by Councillor Carter, second by Councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. This morning, council, we have our OPP Detachment Commander, Staff Sergeant Deb McClure. I'm going to ask if we could start with Councillor Carter. Just introduce yourself to our new station commander.
Gary Dyke CEO.
Jennifer Layu, Deputy Mayor for Algonquin Highlands.
Cease, Rob.
And I'm Dave Burton, Warden of Halliburton County and the Mayor of the Municipality of Highlands East. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you. I'm not really sure exactly what everybody wants to know, but I thought I'd go with an introduction and then if you guys have any questions, for me, that'd be great. And then I'll let you guys carry on with your meeting. Firstly, thank you for inviting me. It's nice to meet all of you. I know I have met some of you, but it's very nice to be invited and have a chance to have some FaceTime with you. I started my career in 2002 with Toronto Police at a very young age of 19, still not really sure what I was doing, but knew I wanted to be a police officer, always have. It's been a dream of mine. I started in Jane and Finch and worked there for about three years. And from there, I OPP was always a dream, but during that timeframe, the OPP was on a hiring freeze, so it kind of forced my hand to either decide whether I wanted to stay with Toronto or what else I could do. And being from a small town, I grew up in the town of Shelbourne, if any of you know where that is, which is near Orangeville, Ontario. And I knew that I wanted to do the small town policing, so Orangeville actually had their own police service at the time. So I went in and saw the chief there and ended up transferring to Orangeville Police. And I did about eight years with Orangeville Police, most of which was in the crime unit. So worked a few major homicides and stuff, which as a lot of times with small municipal services, the OPP will come in and not take over, but certainly provide a lot of resources. It's hard for municipals to do those kind of investigations. So that's really where I kind of got my hands wet and met a lot of the OPP inspectors within CIB and kind of really knew that that was where I wanted to be. So in 2011, I ended up transferring over to the OPP. However, I was on a major homicide at the time, so as much as they gave me a new badge, they gave me a new badge and a set of keys and said, you're going back to the homicide. So I stayed on that homicide until 2014, and at which point I went to Wellington County in West Region and was frontline for about three years there. From there, I was very passionate about helping and training our members. I think it's very important, especially now, as we have a lot of junior members with our retirements. So I wanted to get into our Training Bureau. So from there, I was able to get a spot with the Mount Forest Training Unit as a Constable. So I worked as a Constable there for a couple of years and then I was promoted to a Sergeant there. After about five, six years of doing that, I decided I wanted to do more for our members. And I wanted to give back a little bit more as well. Mental health was is very near and dear to me. And again, there was a lot of that coming forward. We were starting to do new things with the OPP with regards to healthy workplace team and stuff. So I knew I wanted to do more myself. So I applied for Operational Manager, which is a Staff Sergeant role. It's South Bruce, which is King Carden-Walkerston area. And I was successfully promoted there and I did 18 months there before I applied to this job. A big question, so I'll answer is why here? Actually, as a teenager, crazy enough, my aunt and uncle, who my uncle actually was the Chief of Police for Soggy Shores, but prior to that life for him, they owned a motel on Potash Lake, just outside of Bancroft. So not too far and spent a lot of, well, every summer I spent up there as a teenager and obviously that's very close to this area and I had come over and crossed paths and I just loved it. And I had always said to my dad, I'll be there one day, like I'm going to move up there one day. But kids, family, that kind of stuff happens and you know, that kind of slowed me down from coming. I have two grown children, a 21-year-old daughter who's in Guelph University in her third year. And my son just graduated from high school in June. So I had basically started talking about, hey, guys, it's happening in January and that I wanted to come and I was going to start paying attention to any job postings that I wanted to relocate and come up here and live here and work here in these communities. And then in about March is when this job got posted and I applied and was a successful applicant. So I just, it's been a month now that I've been in my house, very exciting. I just finally got my house out in Highlands East and I'm loving every second of being part of this community. It's just, I can't even explain it. I tried to tell my dad, who's only been up once, it just, it feels like a family, all of it. And yeah, I'm super excited to be here and excited to get to know the officers more. I know it's still early for me and I'm still just kind of trying to see how things were run and I know that's difficult because there's been a lot of commanders and intern commanders. So I'm not sure how much was really established. So now is my turn, now that I'm here, to kind of start to see what I want to bring to the table. I still think it's a little early for me to make some of those decisions, but my thought was to kind of get through the summer and then just kind of start bringing some of the things that I've learned that are beneficial to small communities, to our area here. But super excited to be here. Can I promise I'm going to stay? That's the next question. All I can say to you is I've moved four hours away from my kids and my dad to be here. I want to be here, but as all of you in this room, I'm sure know, sometimes family, you know, can happen where you might need to go back towards that. Or sometimes the OPP has different controls, different ideas, I guess, for me that are out of my control. But I do plan on retiring here. I bought my dream home on a lake and I'm super excited. And I hope that, you know, I came here with the idea of staying. Let's just say that.
Well, I'm going to take ownership of you from Highlands East and thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Or comments? Excuse me. Cece.
Yeah, well, first off, welcome to Highlands East. You're in our territory. You're not in heaven, but you can see it from there. I guess my question would be, you're new to the area. We're putting a new police board together here. What's your vision of your interaction with those guys?
My interaction with the board members?
Yeah. How do you see that relationship?
I truly hope that it is a partnership and it's, you know, an equal opportunity to collaborate with one another. I think that it's, you know, I was a part of a board, obviously, back home in establishing that as well, because under the CSPA, this is very new, the detachment boards. And I think that it is so crucial to have a very tight knit working relationship with those individuals, because we all are going to have different ideas and different opinions and thoughts. And I think together we can really make a dream and a vision and a goal for our communities here that we are living in and working in. So I think that, I hope anyways, and I think so far, for the few meetings that I've been to, that I think it's very collaborative and that we'll be kind of like a team.
Is there a question? Cece.
Just one more. What lake did you buy on?
Glammer Lake.
Ah, you're in the best ward in Highlands East.
I am told they have the best fishing, so.
Could do so.
Resolution?
That the presentation of OPP Detachment Commander, Staff Sergeant Deb McClure be accepted.
Some move, but Councillor Dayu, second by Councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you, Deb.
You're very welcome. Thank you again for having me and I really look forward to working with everyone here in this room. Have a great day.
Please. Council, we have Skyline Park Project Funding Request.
It's Mr. Wheeler here to present the county.
So, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about our Skyline Park Project. It's an exciting project for our club and for the town. So my name's Charles Wheeler. I'm with the Halliburton Rotary Club and I'm Chair of our Skyline Park Project Committee, which is the committee that's going to implement this project over the next two or three years. Next slide. So this is the park in 1958, when it was created by the Province of Ontario. It's actually a provincial rest stop on the highway system. And because it doesn't fit their criteria for what a typical rest stop looks like, which is more oriented towards trucking operations, they have had, this park has had no capital investment from MTO since 1958. They've maintained it, but it's kind of getting dreary and there's a capital investment that's needed. Next slide. So Skyline Park created by the Ministry of Transportation, no investment since 58. We're going to embark on a $200,000 makeover of the project over the next three years. We're going to implement new covered picnic shelters and new picnic tables, a year-round accessible washroom building to replace the seasonal placement of porta potties, an expanded viewing platform so that people could stand on the viewing platform with a wedding party and see the whole overlook of the town and Head Lake. We've removed some of the trees that are blocking the view that have grown up in the past 50 years and we're going to take some more out this summer. There would be a new upper viewing platform, some landscaping, and the purpose of my presentation is really to talk to you about the historical display panels we plan to implement. So on May 22nd, we requested that the DICE Art Council Cultural Resources Committee assist the club in developing the narrative content of these five display boards. And they've agreed to help us along with county tourism staff to help us with the narrative and the maps that we're going to create. I spoke at the June 24th DICE Art Council Meeting and as part of that, they approved as part of their 2026 capital budget, a one-third contribution of $5,000 towards the $15,000 cost of these display panels. And the purpose of my delegation today is to request Halliburton County to match DICE Art's contribution for the display panels. Next slide. So this is the park concept at a high level. On the right-hand side, you'll see two parking spaces for buses. Right now, buses basically clog up people that are using the park in the fall when they come for their fall color tours. So that's the two bus slots in yellow. The building to the left of that, that's black, is a new accessible washroom building to replace the porta potties. The big red building in the middle is a new picnic shelter, so a concrete pad fully accessible from the paved area with a roof. A little to the left of that is a semicircular area where, which is seen as a new upper viewing platform for people who are ambulatory disabled, who can't descend the rather steep slope to the lower viewing platform. They would be able to get out of their car, the display panels would sort of frame in that semicircular area so that they could see the view down into Head Lake and Skyline and the rest of the town without actually having to descend down. A little bit to the left of that is another red building. That's a second picnic shelter. That one, we're going to build this fall. And then we're going to expand the viewing platform right down on the far left there. So again, so that a wedding party could stand and have 10 or 12 people on the viewing platform. Next slide. So this is a view, a blow up of that semicircular area with benches. And it would be built off of the existing paved area, so it would be fully accessible for people in wheelchairs. And it would be for ambulatory disabled people who can't descend down to the lower platform. And we're looking at having five historical display panels that would sort of frame in that front edge of that semicircular area. Next slide. So the content of these panels, there's going to be a panel about the history of Halliburton. A second panel would be a map of things to see and do in Halliburton. And we're going to base our map on your Halliburton County Wayfinding Signage Inventory of Tourism Sites, which is very helpful as a starting point for creating that map. There's going to be a map about the history of Skyline Park. There would be an Indigenous land acknowledgement and there would be a display panel of the physical geography of Halliburton. So rivers, lakes, dams, highways, roads, just a basic inventory of the physical geography of the Halliburton area. So the content of those display panels has been, is going to be discussed with the DICE Art CRC and H and Halliburton County Tourism Staff have offered to help with the narrative of that and make sure that it's historically accurate. So the role of the CRC Committee would be to help us draft the narrative. We would be responsible for branding the display panels with the appropriate Rotary Ontario County DICE Art logos and we will produce the final graphics based on the narrative content developed by the CRC. Next slide. So it's a 200, we've spent about $20,000 to date. Many local retailers have volunteered to give us building materials or equipment rentals at cost, so that's been helpful to keep the cost down. We're estimating that the remaining cost is about $200,000 over 2025 to 2027. The ministry initially turned down our request for funding of the washroom building, but with the help of MPP Lori Scott, we were able to change their mind. So they've agreed now to build the accessible washroom building to replace the porta potties and upgrade the park fencing. The remaining costs for the project are going to be assumed by the Halliburton Rotary Club. And if you want to help us with that, you can buy a Rotary card draw ticket. Just a little plug. So the funding of the display panels. So we've estimated, based on an estimate from County Sign in Mindon, that the manufacturing of the display panels would be about $15,000. And that is for a sign for aluminum display panels that would be like a highway sign. It would have a life expectancy of 25 to 30 years. And we're expecting that County Sign will manufacture those for us. So in addition to the one-third cost that, to manufacture the signs that Halliburton Rotary is going to fund, we're going to be responsible for the camera-ready artwork and graphics and the cost to install the panels as per the concept plan. So we're really being, are you really being asked today for Halliburton County to match DICE Art's one-third contribution in, for $5,000 towards the historical display panels? Next slide. So the funding context here is pretty simple. MTO is going to be responsible for maintaining Skyline Park upon completion of our project. So there's no ongoing either DICE Art or Halliburton County maintenance obligation following the completion of our project. And that's sometimes a concern when we build a new project is we may try and pass that maintenance off to a municipal government. And in this case, MTO has agreed to maintain this once we're finished. We don't anticipate making any other funding requests to either DICE Art or Halliburton County for capital improvements. It's all going to be funded by Rotary. So DICE Art and Halliburton County are going to benefit from the building permit fees that we have to apply to DICE Art for and obviously an enhanced Skyline Park that attracts additional tourists and tourist revenue. So schedule and timing issues. The final graphics we're going to have by the end of this year. In September and December, going to meet with the Cultural Resources Committee to make sure that we've got the map, the narrative and the map content finalized by the end of the year. We'd hope to get confirmation from both DICE Art and the county by November that they're going to contribute one-third of the $15,000 cost. In January and March, we would manufacture the signs and in the spring of 2026, they would be installed by Rotary. So our recommendation to you is that you approve the involvement of Halliburton County Tourism Staff in assisting the Rotary Club in developing the content of the display panels and that you provide $5,000 funding as a one-third contribution towards the $15,000 cost, recognizing that DICE Art has agreed for their one-third contribution. Halliburton Rotary will be responsible for the other third and that the installation of the display panels will be by Rotary and MTO will be responsible for the maintenance in the long term. So we're hoping you can support that. Thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Well done, Charles. Questions? Seeing none. Resolution?
That the presentation of Charles Wheeler from the Halliburton Rotary Club Skyline Park Project Funding Request be received.
Councillor Carter, second by Councillor McKechnie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Just, we're just for Mr. Wheeler's, there is a staff report later in the agenda dealing with your request. We're up in a couple, couple items. Thanks.
The consent agenda?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Someone move? Councillor Shell, second by Councillor McKechnie. All in favor? It's carried. Federation of Reports, CEO?
Ms. Tiffin regarding the SOL program.
Great. Sue?
Good morning, Warden Burton and members of council. Thank you so much, Travis. I am happy to share with you officially that the County of Halliburton was successful in our provincial grant application to become a seniors active living center or SELK program operator to coordinate, promote and help support programs for older adults in our community. Thank you, council, for your support in helping this exciting program become a reality in Halliburton County. Before you is a report on Halliburton County's SELK program, which launched last month in collaboration with local municipalities and community partners and of course, through funding and support from the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility. Thank you to the Boyma Group for creating this logo for us. To share some key points, last year, as you'll recall from my August 2024 report, the ministry's Regional Development Advisor for our area recommended the county apply for SELK funding and several organizations and groups that support seniors in the county requested that we take the lead on the application. At the time, there were 316 SELKs throughout the province, but the closest programs to us were located in Apseley, Bracebridge, Dwight, Lindsay and Whitney. This year, 100 new SELKs opened, including ours. We received numerous letters of support from local community groups and organizations for our application. Activities and services are open to all older adults, which is considered to be 55-plus and seniors 65-plus. The purpose of the SELK program is to promote active and healthy living, social engagement and learning for persons who are primarily seniors by providing them with activities and services. The SELK program funds operators to deliver individual programs. SELK programs help build healthier and safer communities and address the long-term growth and needs of an aging population by helping to reduce healthcare costs associated with physical activities and falls, reduce social isolation, a risk factor for abuse and linked to negative physical and mental health outcomes, and provide seniors with services they need and improve service access. For 2025-2026 SELK programs, SELK operators must address one or more of the following program priorities. Connect older adults with community programs and services. Provide programming opportunities for seniors in underserved communities or to underserved populations. Promote the inclusion of all seniors, including those with disabilities, by reducing accessibility barriers to programs and services. SELK operators are encouraged to provide a variety of active and passive programming that addresses at least two or more of the following project categories: health and wellness, physical activities and sports, arts and crafts, cards and games, educational activities, dining activities, social activities and transportation. With Halliburton County's successful program application, we are now in the program in perpetuity. Annually, we can submit an application form detailing our program and budgetary information for the upcoming year, which typically runs from April 1st to March 31st. The Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility will fund up to 80% of SELK programs' net operating costs to a maximum of $55,000. I believe in the report, it says $50,000, but that has been increased this year. Local municipalities have contributed the required minimum 20% of the net annual cost through in-kind space, staff support and program promotion. This year, we requested and were granted $46,000 through the ministry and local municipalities offered a contribution of a minimum of 2,500 in in-kind support, largely space, staff support and promotion of the program. In addition, we received $10,000 for startup funding and $4,420 for special grant expenses from the ministry. Halliburton County SELK was officially announced at the MP and MPP Senior Seminar event in Halliburton last month. And with that official announcement that had been embargoed until that time, the program launched this month at the beginning of July. Thank you to the councillors who were able to attend that day, County CAO Gary Dyke and the Regional Development Advisor for the province, who has been great support in launching this program. Thanking also MP Jamie Schmal and MPP Lori Scott, who supported the county, including myself, the manager of tourism and Halliburton County Community Paramedics in attending the event for the announcement. At that senior seminar, there was extremely positive feedback about the program from the guests and organizations and agencies. One resident shared that she was very much looking forward to the program because she is now in her 80s and that now was the time to do things for herself. While seniors active living centers suggest one space, and in some municipalities throughout the province, there is one location for programming, Halliburton County SELK is organized through program partners located in our four municipalities to bring programming closer to home for residents. However, programs are open to all residents, so folks from Irondale can attend programs in Dorset and folks from Cardiff can attend programs in Harcourt. In addition, throughout the year, virtual information sessions can be offered and we are currently researching a program called Seniors Center Without Walls, a telephone program to help connect people who are not able or easily able to leave home. Program partners this year include the four Royal Canadian Legions in Mindon, Halliburton, Wilberforce and Cardiff, Search Community Services, Abbey Gardens, Halliburton County Master Gardens, Halliburton Highlands Genealogy Group, the Halliburton County Public Library, the Halliburton County Community Paramedics and local municipalities. These partners are contributing in different ways and are involved in different ways depending on what works best for them. We are meeting monthly to check in, share ideas and feedback and plan for the upcoming months. Each partner has brought forward different program proposals. For example, the Halliburton Legion is interested in running first aid programs for seniors, while the Wilberforce Legion is interested in offering paint classes and a pen pal letter writing project. Abbey Gardens is offering many outdoor programs, including learn to play disc golf and forest paving. And the Halliburton County Public Library is offering tech classes. The Halliburton County Community Paramedics are looking into offering wellness clinics and Search's planning cooking classes, such as Cooking for One or Cooking on a Budget in each municipality. This program is very much iterated, so programs might change with feedback from participants. Sharing here a photo from one of this month's painting classes held at the Wilberforce Legion that definitely looks fun. And just a disclaimer, believe it or not, you do not need to be an artist to attend this class. In addition, one comment we heard from seniors was that they wanted a space to drop in and play board games with friends or with strangers who become friends. And so using startup funding provided by the province, six locations in the county now have a collection of board games available for these drop-in programs. My grandma always said that friendship ceases when card playing begins, but hopefully this drop-in program promotes friendly playing. July and August are later months in programming for many partners due to the busy summer season, but the calendars for these months are shown here. Some partners are more keen to deliver programming in the summer months, while others are offering something different through the, throughout the fall or winter. It's not necessary for partners to offer something every month. A wide variety of events and activities will take place throughout the county. All programs are currently $2 or pay what you can with donations returning to the SELK program. A SELK webpage has been launched on the county website with information about the program, but also with a listing of local resources available to seniors in Halliburton County. The program is being advertised in local newspapers and on radio, on social media, emailed to service providers and organizations to share with residents and printed copies of the calendar are being distributed throughout the county each month. We are reminding participants to bring a newspaper, oh, sorry, to bring a neighbor, tell a friend or to just show up themselves to try something new. So we are off to a great start. This program has been a truly positive effort in collaboration with county staff, with the province, member municipalities and groups and organizations that serve our senior population as well as the senior population themselves. So an incredible thank you to all who have responded so enthusiastically to make this happen. Thank you for your time today. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Councillor Dayu?
Thanks, Sue. This looks just great, really, really does. Question is, is there scope for increasing your number of partners in incoming years or have you set a fixed number of partners?
No, so we have not set a fixed number of partners even throughout the year. So some partners contribute in different ways. Not everyone requires funding, but they do want to provide something for seniors. So that's available in any year and, and programs and partners can change each year. So we are looking into the process of how to best operate that.
Cece?
First off, awesome job. I realize that there's more than you working on it, but you've been the champion of this thing and the, you know, the results are speaking for themselves. My question is, I, I got 20 copies of the July one and they disappeared like that to people who were interested, didn't know it existed, thought it was really good. I see the August one, is there a possibility to get, say, 20 copies of that before I leave today?
Thank you for that question, Councillor Ryle. That is actually a draft calendar, so it's, it will be finalized tomorrow. We're just waiting for one more detail from some of the partners, but we will make sure that we get calendars to you so that you can distribute to everyone you see. There is also an option for folks to visit the online, the SELK webpage. There is a downloadable version there. There is a downloadable version there, and they are available at local libraries and local legions as well.
Is it possible that we could possibly get some delivered to Highlands East, say, this week sometime?
I will absolutely look into that. I'm sure it would be possible.
Thank you.
Other questions? Resolution?
That's that staff report CSWB zero four twenty twenty-five. The Senior Active Living Center program update be received.
Someone move? Councillor Carter, second by Deputy Mayor, Councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Public Works approval to award the delivery of sodium chloride. So.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. My report today is for the approval to award delivery of sodium chloride, which is road salt contract. A cooperative RFT, or request for tender led by Pittborough County, closed on June seventeenth, and three bids were received. This cooperative tender is for a three-year period with two-year, one-year extensions. And the the approved twenty-five budget allocated for this was one hundred and twenty-five thousand, where the recommended bid price, which was the lowest from Cortha Capital Contracting Construction, sorry, was for one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-four, including non-recoverable. And I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Right?
One question about the calcium cord. Is it flake or liquid you're getting?
It's flake. Yeah, it's, it's the
You said we closed the tender on a storage shed and it hadn't been awarded yet. Can you tell me roughly the prices of those and the size?
The salt shed?
Yes.
Yeah, it's thirty by forty. And it's it's a dome-style fabric. Yeah, with a fabric top on it, with large concrete blocks as walls, and then the fabric structures on top of that. I believe it was for around seventy thousand dollars.
Very good, very good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Would that be the same as the one that's in Highland Grove?
Exactly the same.
Other questions? Resolution?
That staff report PWS twelve twenty twenty-five approval to award the delivery contract for sodium chloride be approved and the bylaw be presented. Authorize the word and the clerk to execute a delivery agreement with Cortha Capital Construction.
If someone move? Councillor Daye, second by Councillor McCackney. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Planning, Planning Department Work Plan Update. Elizabeth.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, council. Just a brief update today on a couple items. So further to council's direction about the development charges background study, now that the development charge project is kicking off again, the project team from Watson and Associates will be making a presentation at the August council meeting with the purpose of the presentation to provide a refresher for council on development charges, including their applicability, as well as an overview of the applicable legislation and the project's scope moving forward. It's just been a while since council has had any of that information in front of them because the project has been dormant for a while. So just a refresher so that, so that everyone's on the same page. And then with respect to the LIDAR project, county staff also just recently received the required files from Ganderaska, which is a bit of an update, I think, from what's in the report. And we are currently in the process of migrating the information onto the county's GIS system for public launch. Project has faced many delays over the past couple of years. However, I'm hopeful to have a finished product for council in the next couple of months with public launch occurring after that. So with that, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Any questions? Councillor Carter.
On the, on the LIDAR, so who is the group that is actually looking at that that'll bring it to the next step?
It's in IT right now. Our GIS person, Joanne, is migrating the files. We just received them last week from Ganderaska, so we'll be making it into a really, hopefully, user-friendly interface that provides the information in a self-serve fashion instead of having to figure out through various means what the information needs. So once that's ready, we'll be happy to show council how user-friendly it is for the average individual to access.
So, but the, as I understand it, depending on what the you've got sort of slightly different maps depending on what the water flow is. In other words, if it's four and a half meters per second versus three meters per second or so on, that changes the boundaries of the flood zone a little bit. So like, how, how are you deciding what to use? Like, we don't, you know, we used to have the Hurricane Hazel Rule and the Hundred Year Storm Rule. Like, what is the basis for what you're going to be using for these maps?
Through you, Warden. I believe the two data sets that were used by Ganderaska to create the mapping were the Timmin Storm and then the one in Hundred Year and/or the regional, regional storm event numbers. So it's always the worst side of the two that's used. And then the, the mapping that will be created ultimately for the river systems, it's a two-zone concept, and that was one of the reasons why the project's been delayed a bit because the provincial planning statement speaks to two-zone flood mapping when it's a river system. So the Gull and the Burnt River would be two-zone, where you have the floodway, which, from the planning perspective, is no site alteration whatsoever. And then the flood fringe, which is, you know, site alteration development permitted in some instances. So that would be for the rivers, and then it would be one zone for all the lakes, which Ganderaska's incorporated wasn't necessarily through the LIDAR, but to make it all into one comprehensive floodplain mapping. The one zone for lakes has been incorporated into the LIDAR two-zone for the river systems. So that will be what the mapping is based on.
Well, go ahead.
This is, I mean, right now, we're dealing with all sorts of old maps, and, you know, this, I think, to a certain extent affects Minden more because of the river rate through the middle of town. So, you know, the sooner we can get to this, the better because working with one set of maps is going to be a dream, I think, for most of the planning departments.
Hey, other comments? Resolution?
That plant, that report PLN fourteen twenty twenty-five, planning department work plan update be received as information.
Someone move? Councillor Shell, second by Councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Economic Development? Scott?
Good morning, Warden and members of council. This is just a follow-up report, just providing a little bit more detail to Mr. Wheeler's presentation from this morning. We traditionally don't field a lot of these requests, but it does meet a lot of our priorities within the Tourism Department or Strategic Plan, particularly related to the rehabilitation of a community asset. The only caveat to the report that we're recommending is staff is just splitting the financial request over two years. So it would be twenty-five hundred this year, twenty-five hundred in twenty twenty-six. And then just given that the project won't take place until, our installation won't take place until twenty twenty-six, we feel that's appropriate. And as noted in Mr. Wheeler's presentation, our manager tourism has been working with both Rotary and the Dicert Cultural Committee over the spring and into the summer, just on the content of those panels. And happy to field any questions if you have any.
Questions? Comments? Resolution?
Staff report EDT eleven twenty twenty-five, Halliburton Rotary Skyline Park Capital Investment Project. Financial request be approved.
Someone move? Councillor McCackney, second by Councillor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. I got the rental property lease extension. Wendy, okay.
Good morning, Warden and members of county council. I bring before you today a report regarding the two properties that the county's been leasing for the purposes of physician recruitment. The first lease is in Minden, the first property is in Minden. That lease has expired now. We're recommending that we extend this lease from October to the end of December for this year. The second lease is in Halliburton, and we're recommending to extend this lease for a period of another twelve months. The staff recognizes that usages, that the usage at both properties has diminished in twenty twenty-five. Since this report, since I wrote this report, the condo that the physician group in Halliburton owns and uses to house residents and physicians is now up for sale, and they're no longer housing any learners or physicians there. So it's, it's safe to say that the usage of our properties will increase because of this. And just wanted to point out, too, that staff has included the costs associated with these rental properties in the twenty twenty-five physician recruitment operating budget. Any questions?
Thanks, Wendy. Questions? Resolution?
The Halliburton County Council approves staff report EDT ten twenty twenty-five rent rental property lease extension.
Someone move? Councillor Carter, second by Councillor Ferry. All in favor? Carried?
Thank you.
Thank you. IT? ERP replacement project. Welcome, Mike.
Good morning, Warden Burton, members of council. So my first report today is to inform council of the impending end-of-life for the county's financial software, Microsoft Dynamics GP, which is scheduled to hit end-of-life in twenty twenty-nine, end of year twenty twenty-nine. So that, what that means is by that date, Microsoft will stop supporting Dynamics GP and stop releasing security updates, feature updates, and critically payroll updates, which we need in order to pay our employees. So this, what this report is, is just giving council an update as to what staff are doing to prepare for that end-of-life. We've talked of this as a bit of a joint approach with our member municipalities. We worked with all of them. We released an RFI earlier this year to kind of see kind of what was out in the market in order to then be able to kind of build out a scope list to move forward with the project. Right now, the county Algonquin Highlands and Minden Hills are planning on releasing a joint RFP in the fall, pending local council approvals, of course. We're wanting, even though the project, or sorry, even though the software is not planned on hitting end-of-life until end of twenty twenty-nine, we do want to start moving on this now because it can be a long process with developing the RFP, releasing it, rewarding, awarding it, and then a, you know, a joint implementation of this, of this software could take twelve to fourteen months. And we expect that because Dynamics GP was heavily used in the municipal space, and everyone who's using that product is going to be in the same boat as we are. We don't want to get stuck at the tail end of that and then kind of come up with a, come up against the crunch of all these municipalities and few resources. So, yeah, so that's basically it in a nutshell. We are hoping that with the new product, you know, we have the, the must-dos. We must replace any of our, our financial system, but we're also hoping to modernize it at the same time as well. So our current system does have some issues with reporting. Financial analytics are sometimes hard to get out of it. There's no, you know, there's no public portal, even though that's maybe more of a, more important for the, for our lower tiers. It's still something that would be nice to have here as well. It's not cloud-based, and everything in the market is going cloud-based. So in terms of scalability and a disaster, from a disaster recovery, business continuity approach, it is beneficial to move it into the cloud. So, yeah, so there are other benefits we are hoping to, to get out of this project. So again, this report is just as a, as a more of an informational report. When, when we do release an RFP, we do plan on bringing this back to council with, with, for award, and then have a costing plan worked out as well. As of, right now, we don't know what this is necessarily going to cost until, you know, we do the RFP and, and we select a winner. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Councillor Daye, Daye.
Thank you. Two questions, first being, are we contractually bound until a certain time to the, the system that we've got? And I ask in, with the question in mind of, would there be a financial overlap for us? Or can we opt out of what we've got and the services that we receive at any time once we get the new award? That's my first question.
Through the warden, we pay annually for support and licensing, so there will likely be some overlap as we'll have to pay for the old system support while we're implementing the new system. But no, we, we pay annually for support, so that's, we're only contracted for a year.
That's great.
Part two?
Yeah, part two. We've got a service delivery review goal of having all of our lower-tier municipalities work towards, you know, a similar objective. It sounds like so far you only had two of the four on board for this phase of tender. Is it expected that the other two municipalities will be jumping in later on? Or how does, what is the timeline for that?
If I may, through the warden, so Dicert and Highlands East. I guess we came up against a timing issue. The other partners couldn't meet the couldn't meet the timing goals, I guess, that Dicert and Highlands East wanted to hit in order to get a contract signed. So at that point, they both decided to split off, and I think they single sourced their solution. So the remaining three partners decide, okay, we, we're going to do the RFP. It's going to take a little longer. So that's kind of where that landed.
Go ahead.
So then by twenty twenty-nine, will we all be operating seamlessly with the same, the same operating system? Or is it possible that we'll have different? Yeah, I guess it's possible we'll have different systems.
It is possible, right? We won't know until the RFP is released and we get the proposals back, and then we score them. Yeah.
Questions? Cease?
Just, just for my own curiosity, obviously Highlands East and Dicert have decided to, to take a slightly different approach, which is fine. Is it theoretically possible that we could end up with the same software just under two different purchase packages?
Yeah, through the warden, yes, it's definitely possible. We could all land on the same product, just not guaranteed.
Any questions? Resolution?
That, that report ITS zero six twenty twenty-five ERP replacement project, we receive as information.
Someone move? Councillor Carter, second by Councillor Daye. All in favor? It's carried. Formation of a IT Governance Committee.
Thank you. So my next report is seeking council's endorsement for the formation of an IT Governance Committee. So the CAOs and some, and some key staff members have been meeting as what we call an IT Service Delivery Review Working Group, and this came out of the Joint Service Delivery Review that came out of twenty twenty. We've been meeting regularly since, I think it was late twenty twenty, maybe early twenty twenty-one. One of the things that came out of the IT Digital Strategy is actually to turn this working group into kind of a formalized steering committee with oversight on joint projects and cybersecurity. So working with the, working with the SDR group and CAOs, we've structured a senior staff committee composed exclusively of the, of the CAOs from each municipality with the Digital Transformation Working Group serving in an advisory capacity. The structure of the committee has been designed to reflect its operational nature. Bringing, by bringing together the CAOs in each municipality, we're ensuring the group is made up of those people directly responsible for management, staff, resources, and service delivery. While the committee itself is designed to be a staff body, we all do recognize the importance of council oversight and input. So to ensure full transparency and accountability, the committee has planned to divide semi-annual updates to all locals, so to the county council and the four municipal councils as well. and the four municipal councils as well. Um, these updates will include progress reports, the outcomes of joint uh, initiatives, cybersecurity issues, updates, and basically any significant items that we feel um, require council consideration or approval. So uh, I'm just recommending that council receive this report and endorse the formation of the, uh, the committee as outlined in the attached terms of reference. And as always, happy to take any questions.
Questions? Rick?
Um, I think it's a, it's a great project, Mike, and I, I certainly endorse it. My concern a little bit is that two meetings a month for the C A Os, I understand that may be the start, but I don't know. But if everybody else is in this, but C A Os are really busy and they're, they're meeting all the time. And when they're meeting, they're not doing their job where, where we really need the job done. So I'm just trying to figure out here, like, two meetings a month, uh, is that going to be just a start or are we going to do this all the time?
Sorry, if I may, and, and, and if this is a, um, if this is an error in the terms of reference, I'll definitely look for it and correct it. The intention is to meet every two months with C A Os, not, not twice a month. So if that's not reflected in those terms of references, then they'll get, I can get them changed. Um, but yes, the, the, the intention is once every, once every two months.
I think, Cease?
Yeah, I, I, I strongly endorse this. I, I think that with the way A I is going with its benefits and threats and with everything else that's going out there in terms of just a higher cost of doing everything, specifically cyber insurance. Um, I, I think it's important that we all get on the same page uh, with regards to how we're going to attack, if not prevent some of that stuff from happening. So I think a committee like this would be, would be certainly a, a, a strong proactive way of dealing with that. So I, I, I think it's, it's, one, it's overdue and two, it should continue and, and, and just become part of the way we do business.
Questions? Resolution?
Uh, that report I T S zero five twenty twenty-five, Formation of an I T Governance Committee, we receive as information. And the Halliburton County Council approved the creation of an I T Governance Committee as outlined in Schedule H to the report.
Someone move, councillor Ryle, second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead.
This, new, this is a slightly new subject that I just found out about this, but I think it's, it's pertinent. Um, so there's this program that, you know, the, the feds and the, and the province had about getting high-speed internet to everybody's home and so on and so forth. So Bell um, with using X Pro Tech, X Pro Tech is a company that Bell uses for building out their networks and so on. Um, they're running cables in the lake. Okay, so they're running fiber in the lake and they're going to then, if you're interested, um, they will bring the fiber from the lake onto your shoreline and put a, uh, sort of a termination box there and then run the fiber into your cottage or, uh, or home. And um, uh, and then they'll repair any of the damage they did in digging up the holes and uh, the, you know, the, and if it's on a, if it's too rocky, they'll run it over the top of the rock in a certain conduit or something. So I hadn't heard anything about this. It's happening on one of the lakes in Minden. Um, there's a whole number of issues. Apparently they've been working with M and R uh, to do this. Um, the cable is going to be just basically lying on the bottom of the lake. Um, and the, um, but one of the issues is if somebody doesn't own their shoreline road allowance, uh, they're now coming onto our land uh, to do this and they certainly haven't talked to us whatsoever. So I can pass that along to you, Mike. I don't know if you've heard of this program, but they're, they're actively doing it on at least one of the lakes in Minden. So um, this is a, this is a, a new, a new thing, which uh, yeah, it just came out of the blip.
Any comment, Mike?
No, I, I haven't heard of this program. Uh, is there anything you need?
I can send you what I've got.
Okay, was there anything you needed? Tried to follow up with Bella, get any information for council?
Well, I mean, I think it affects all of us and it probably would be something then, you know, to know a little bit about. Um, and then we have to decide what we want to do when people don't own their shoreline road allowance because now they're coming onto our land and, uh, and putting in a structure. It's only a little box, but it's a, still a structure, right?
Yep. So through the warden, any information that you can provide to me about it? Then I'll do my best to see if I can dig up some information, no pun included, uh, about the program.
Good. Thank you. Uh, resolution? We, we did it.
We did it. I'm sorry. Um, I got, I got.
Proclamation, thank you. That's our, that's the agenda.
Um, Warden, uh, Ms. Tiffin will provide a, a background to council with respect to the proclamation, proclamation request today for the International Overdose Awareness Day.
Hello again, Warden Burton and members of council. Uh, before you, there's a proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is recognized on August thirty-first annually. Uh, this request comes from the Halliburton Corthe Lakes Northumberland Drug Strategy. On this day, events take place in communities around the world to honor lives lost, educate families, friends, and peers, and explore evidence and community-based solutions to prevent overdoses from happening. The twenty-twenty-five theme, One Big Family Driven by Hope, is a direct invitation to families and friends who have lost loved ones to the drug poisoning crisis to come out to share, learn, and be supported in their loss. More than a dozen organizations are working across the four pillars, education and prevention, treatment, harm reduction, and community safety. H K L N Drug Strategy members are co-organizing a local I O A D event and will be onsite with information and activities. More information about this event will be shared with the community soon. We were fortunate this year to have peers with the Coming Full Circle Initiative, a project through C M H A, the Canadian Mental Health Association, and Point in Time engaged in the event as well. The H K L N Drug Strategy appreciates council's support.
Yes, thank you, Warden. I'll uh, really read out the proclamation, um, the app, council. Uh, whereas the Halliburton Corthe Lakes Northumberland Drug Strategy recognizes August thirty-first as International Overdose Awareness Day, the largest annual campaign to end drug poisonings and to honor without stigma the lives of those impacted by substance use and those who have died. Whereas this year's theme, One Big Family Driven by Hope, invites us to reimagine what it means to be a family, one grounded in hope, united by love and move, and move to action. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day brings attention to the ongoing public health crisis caused by an unregulated and toxic drug supply and calls for open dialogue and meaningful action, including evidence-based strategies to prevent drug poisonings and urge drug policy reform. And whereas the campaign also acknowledges the deep grief experienced by families, friends, and communities left behind in the wake of drug-related deaths. That, that, that Halliburton County proclaim August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, International Overdose Awareness Day in the Halliburton County.
But if someone move, councillor Dayu, second by councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Go ahead.
This would also be uh, promoted on our lower-tier websites as long, as well as the county. Would that be a fair statement? Because it's now county-wide.
Yep. Or Sue, go ahead.
Um, it certainly can be. We can share it with member municipalities. Absolutely.
Uh, bylaws?
Uh, that bylaw forty-three-ten, being a bylaw to appoint members to the Short Term Rentals Appeals Committee, be considered to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Someone move? Councillor Ferry, second by councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Let me close.
Yep.
Bob?
Sorry, I missed the, uh, the business arising. Uh, one, just, I think we should note that, uh, last week, um, we were part of a, a program to receive money for healthcare. Um, so this is a part of the provincial government and Jane Philpott um, um, initiative to try to bring more primary care to um, people in Ontario. Um, it was, um, so they, they had their first uh, tranche of, uh, of awards and the applications had to be done by postal code, which is a bit odd, but, um, and so the K O M postal code, which includes, starts in Algonquin Highlands, runs through Minden, takes part of um, Dyser and runs all the way down through Cobacunk down to Woodville, uh, which obviously the postman used to go up Highway thirty-five or something. Um, uh, so that group, that area, that postal code had six thousand nine hundred some odd people who were, have, don't have family doctors. And uh, this money was actually not for doctors and nurses, but it's for allied health professionals. Uh, so it's the O Ts, the dieticians and, and, and others. Um, like many government programs, they, they announce it and award the money and the, uh, if you will, the regulations and rules only come out later. So they don't in fact know exactly what, you know, how they can use the money. But the, the money was really awarded for um, Minden Hills, Cobacunk, and Woodville because there are physical facilities in each of those three, three areas. Um, and North Corthe Family Health Team uh, made the application on behalf of the other family health teams in the area. And we were successful. It's, it's around three million dollars, which is not insignificant, but there's another, I think, another million that will be added on to that. So uh, I think total about four-point-three million dollars that is coming into the area to try to improve primary care, um, health availability to, uh, you know, to, to our area. So I think it's a, it's significant money and uh, we should be, uh, we should be happy to get it. And uh, anytime the ministry wants to give us money, um, I think we'll all be there with open hands and open hearts to accept it.
Good. Thank you, Bob, and thank you for going and representing the county as well. That I could not make it, but Cease?
Um, my apologies for when we were going through a series of things. I was, wanted to bring something up and I forgot, so I'm going to bring it up now. The new health unit is looking for provincial appointees uh, to represent the area. And right now, we do not have anyone that is in the Halliburton County area. And uh, because we're allowed to have four from each of the uh, legacy uh, health units that merged, uh, it would be nice if we could have one from Halliburton County. So if you know anyone or, uh, that is a non-elected official, uh, that would be interested in being part of the board, please contact the H K N P uh, health unit and, and let them know, uh, there's an application that they can fill out. And it would be certainly of a great benefit to all of us if we could have someone from Halliburton County sitting on that board. I apologize for not bringing it up earlier, but I think it's important that we did bring it up.
Great, thank you. We are, I guess, a motion to go into, move into closed session?
Um, that in accordance with Ms. Black's section twen- uh, two-three-nine-two B, Halliburton County, enter the closed session for the following matters, uh, be personal matters about identifiable individuals, including Miss Bo, local board employees.
Councillor Carter, second by councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Scott? Give me a second here. I haven't got his thumbs up here yet. Okay, thank you. Back to order? Uh, report from closed session?
Uh, thank you, Warden Burton. Uh, motion that C O report regarding county human resources update be received as information.
Someone move, but councillor Carter, second by councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried? Uh, confirmation bylaw?
Uh, that bylaw forty-three-eleven, being a bylaw confirming the proceedings of the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting of Halliburton County Council, be considered to be read a first, second, and third time.
If someone move, councillor Shell, second by councillor Dayu. All in favor? Carried? Adjournment?
Uh, that the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned at ten-thirty-eight A M.
Councillor McKechnie, second, councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.